It's nine AM, August thirteenth, twenty fourteen, time for the Tulare County Planning Commission meeting. Roll call, please.
Gong.
Yes.
Millie?
Millie's is here. He's just stepped out of the room for a moment. He'll be back.
Okay. Elliot is absent. Diaz?
Yes, here.
Whitlatch?
Here.
Tilianno?
Here.
Aguilar?
Here.
Okay. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which we stand as one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item two is a public comment. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda. Under state law, matters presented under this item cannot be discussed or acted upon by the Planning Commission at this time. For items appearing on the agenda, the public will be invited to make comments at the time the items come up for Planning Commission consideration. So that all interested parties have an opportunity to speak, any person addressing the Planning Commission may be limited to the, at the discretion of the Chair. At all times, please use the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Is there anybody that would like to address the Planning Commission on anything that is not on the agenda today? Okay, seeing none, move on. Item three is approval of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for July twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen.
Okay. Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Elliot? I'm sorry, Elliot is absent. Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Tilianno?
Yes.
Norman?
Aguilar. Commissioner Aguilar? Okay. Okay. Item four is parcel map public hearings. Action on all parcel maps in this section of the agenda will be heard in one public hearing unless anyone wishing to discuss any one of the items requests that it be pulled for separate public hearing. No staff presentation will be given on any item unless requested. In any case, there will be a separate vote on this item. It looks like we have one item. Four A is tentative parcel map P number PPM fourteen dash zero two four, Raymond Gonzalez and with James Winton and Associates. Does anybody want to discuss this? Anybody have any conflicts with it? We'll move it over to, this is a public hearing, open it up for public testimony. Anybody would like to comment on tentative parcel map PPM fourteen dash zero two four? Seeing none, we'll close the public testimony portion, bring it back, and if there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve PPM fourteen zero two four and the category exemption that goes with it.
I second that motion.
Roll call.
Gong.
Yes.
Millie?
Yes.
Diaz?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Tilianno?
Yes.
Norman?
Aguilar.
Yes.
I'm really on a roll, aren't I?
Okay. Okay, that's that one. All right.
Pick it up a little bit, I think we're behind schedule.
You think so? Well, if I didn't have any comments from my commissioners, I'd be on board. Moving right along. Item five A is, this is a public hearing. Five A is a general plan amendment, GPA thirteen dash zero zero two, zone change amendment, PZ thirteen dash zero zero two, and Williamson Act cancellation, PAC thirteen dash zero zero two, and three A quality services. This is a general plan amendment to GPA seventy-seven dash two, Tulare County Farmersville Land Use Plan for the agricultural to service commercial land use designation on the entire thirty-eight acre parcel. Change of zone from an AE forty exclusively ag forty acre minimum to a C-three service commercial zone on the entire thirty-eight acres of the property. Ag preservation cancellation of the entire thirty-eight acre parcel. The project site is located within an ag preserve number three-two-six-five and under the Williamson Act contract number nine-six-one-zero. The property owner has filed for a full non-renewal of the Williamson Act contract in two thousand and six. Property will require an approved Williamson Act cancellation from the Board of Supervisors for the project to proceed as a general plan amendment and zone change. The project includes approximately ten point five acres of existing outdoor commercial storage, one acre for the existing residence, two and a half acres for proposed outdoor commercial storage, nine acres for a proposed commercial nursery, and fifteen acres of remaining ag operation. In accordance with the Farmersville specific plan, the project proposes approximately five acres of future ponding basin, currently existing source, and three future street plan lines. Our contact is Chuck Przelski, and Chuck, you have the floor. Go ahead. Chuck, before you move, let the record show that Mr. Elliot is present at nine oh seven. Yeah, we got you here. Go ahead, Chuck, now you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Today before is a general plan amendment thirteen zero zero two, zone change thirteen zero zero three. There is a Williamson Act cancellation that goes along with the project, however, there will be no recommendation for the Williamson Act to the Board of Supervisors as the general plan amendment or the zone change. I'll explain that later in the presentation. The overview of the project, the applicant is AAA Quality Services. The location is adjacent to the city of Farmersville. Is existing commercial storage yard on approximately five acres of the property that is not allowed within an AE forty zone, hence the general plan amendment and the zone change. As mentioned, the site includes approximately ten and a half acres of commercial storage. There's a residence, there's a more proposed outdoor storage, and a proposed commercial nursery on the eastern portion of the project site. This gives you a vicinity of the area. You see the site located, excuse me, right next to the city of Farmersville, south of one ninety-eight, east of the city of Visalia. The project, as mentioned, is an amendment to general plan amendment seventy-seven dash two from agriculture to service commercial. Change of zone from AE forty to C-three, and the cancellation on the entire property of the Williamson Act cancellation. We can see the site, the aerial photo here, existing facility is in two places, on the northwest corner up here, the residence is in the center north, the commercial nursery will be approximately this area, and then there's another storage area to the southwest. This shows the existing general plan for the county. At the particular time, there's been many amendments to the boundaries, which I'll show in another map, but none of the general plan land uses have been changed since nineteen seventy-seven for this area. Therefore, even though it's within an urban boundary, there has been no land use amendments or zone changes to this area. This is the zoning area, existing AE forty, again, since nineteen seventy-seven, there's been no zone changes for this area. You'll notice on this map that all the boundaries, the sphere of influence for the city of Farmersville, the urban development boundary for the county, this site is all within those boundaries. All the boundaries are to the north and to the east. So in two thousand, our urban development boundary was amended and included the site within the urban development boundary of Farmersville. This is the site plan for the project, the existing commercial storage for the northwest corner, the commercial nursery for the eastern, northeastern corner, agriculture remaining in the center area, more storage in the southwest, which may become a ponding basin at a later moment if the area develops or is annexed into the city of Farmersville, and then this would be more agriculture storage. You do see the city plan lines for streets also on this particular map. General plan consistency, four policies within the county that this particular project does conform with. Coordination with the city, I've had many discussions with the city of Farmersville regarding this project, and they do have certain conditions that they would like to see on this particular project, I'll go over later. They would like to see the development develop to city design standards. The project is within the urban development boundary, which, under county policy, this is where urban development is supposed to go. And the general plan designation is consistent with the cities. Yes?
I have short memory, so before I forget. This is coming up often over the years, maybe this is a Mike Spot question, but I think it's the, is it our county policy that when property is within Farmersville, Visalia's urban area boundary, to go with their standards rather than ours? Did we ever resolve that?
The answer is yes. If they're in the urban development boundary, we go with the standards of the city, and that's per our general plan. And memorandum of understanding.
But we could do urban area boundary.
It's discretionary, but what we're trying to do, because there's so many policies in the GPU dealing with coordination and cooperation and so forth, unless it's really low density and it's appropriate, we will really take into account their comments, the type of land use merits, you know, upgraded development standards. UDB, yes. UAB, it's negotiable.
Yeah, because sometimes that can be quite a ways away from anything.
Exactly.
And the cities understand that, I hope, right?
They do. We have good cooperation with the cities, all of them.
Okay, great. Keep going, I'm sorry.
The environmental document that was prepared for this project was a mitigated negative declaration. There's a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program associated with it, and was submitted for a thirty-day public review. As mentioned, the city of Farmersville requested conditions to be a part of this particular project, and it is placed in the condition resolution and as a mitigation and monitoring Discussion of water and sewer, the existing structures currently are served by septic and well for future commercial development other than the storage area, they would be required to hook up to city water and sewer.
Chuck, where is the closest hookup to the city water sewer?
That would be along Farmersville Boulevard, which I believe, I'll show you as soon as I get another map.
Half a mile away, huh?
It's pretty far right now, yes. The city does intend to annex, they just cannot annex at the moment, so when that happens will actually be the key of when future development will be required to hook Cultural resources, right now, the site is currently used as a storage facility and is in agricultural production. Staff inspected the site on April first, two thousand and fourteen. Also, the county obtained a cultural resource report on April seventh, two thousand and fourteen, and the inspection of the site and the Chris report, no cultural resources were observed or mentioned in the Chris letter. Species of concern, California Natural Diversity Data Bank map attached in your report, there are no species of concern located on or near the site. Williamson Act contract, again, this is the Board of Supervisors, but since this is a part of the overall project, I bring it up before your commission, the applicant intends to cancel the Williamson Act contract for the entire site. Staff did a Williamson Act conformity criteria for the cancellation, it's found within the staff report and found that the project would be able to cancel the entire site. He sent out letters to the Department of Conservation, and they agree with the county's assessment, since it's in the urban development boundary, that they would be able to cancel without any other conditions. And again, cancellation is a Board of Supervisors action. City of Farmersville comments, the city is requesting these particular comments, would like to see paved parking, landscaping and screening, development consistent with their Highway one ninety-eight specific plan. No billboard, which would be an additional condition that's requested by the city, which would be an amendment to the resolution before you today. They are also requesting that the property become annexed into the city when it's feasible. Additional storage areas are to be landscaped and screened from all public viewing, and future building permits obtained from the county regarding development of the site must adhere to the development standards and infrastructure plan lines for the city. There is additional comments that we include into the conditions from environmental health, essentially any domestic well that provides water to more than twenty-five units is a California Department of Health well and must be regulated through them. If that condition does apply, then they would have to go to the California water system and not through the county. The building division requested no storage of abandoned material or solid waste as described in accordance with County Ordinance Code, Part Four, Chapter Three, Sections four, zero, three, one, one, four, zero, and Part Four, Chapter One, Section four, zero, one, one, zero, seven, zero. Constitutes a public nuisance, such waste shall be properly disposed of at a county facility or other approved facility within three months. That's also in addition.
You got a comment on the letter we got that indicates the property has abandoned things on it?
That's correct. This is the map of the Farmersville industrial plan or specific plan, just really briefly to answer Mr. Diaz's question, the facilities are along this road right here, so yes, it's about a quarter mile away from the existing facilities. All this area to the east is planned for industrial uses in the city of Farmersville Industrial Specific Plan. Another map, this is the proposed general plan map. You can see the area now designated as commercial, service commercial. This is the ordinance map, the zoning ordinance map, the new property would be Zone C-three, and as a recommendation to the Planning Commission, we recommend approval of the mitigated negative declaration, mitigated monitoring and reporting program to the Board of Supervisors. We also recommend approval of general plan amendment thirteen zero zero two and PZ thirteen zero zero four to the Board of Supervisors with conditions as modified. This concludes staff's presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be glad.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr.
You know, that intersection is really busy, and I can't remember who told me this, some of his staff, that there is a, that off-ramp is going to have a circle, and it's going to tie into Farmersville Boulevard, and do we know what that's going to look like, and as these industrial properties or uses develop to the east, is that going to make it easier access coming off the freeway?
I'm not exactly sure of the plans for this particular interchange, but there are plans to expand it. Since it's a quarter mile away, most of the access, as you can see from this particular map, would be south of the project site, or at least east to it, along this particular road. If this area does develop per the specific plan for Farmersville, all the access, or the majority of access, will be through these roads and down to the south of the actual intersection improvements.
Farmersville's very fast. Was you, Aaron, that told me about the circle? Get off the freeway?
It was not me, no.
One of you guys told me that, come on. So there's going to be a couple of off-ramps at Tulare County, I know I didn't dream this, maybe I dreamt it, but there's going to improve with traffic circles, and that is one of them right there.
And what it says on the map?
We thought it was public hearing, okay. Okay. Oh, I know, Knopf Engineering told me that they have a contract to do that. Came from Mike Knopf.
Also, the applicant is present today, if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it then? Any other questions? Okay. Seeing, thank you, Chuck. Open this portion of the hearing to the public testimony portion. Would the applicant like to come forward and please give us your name and address for the record? Matt?
Try this one over here, that way, yeah.
I'm Terry Thompson, and actually I, two oh one, three oh Avenue, three twenty-four, Wood Lake is my home. The only, the only real comment I have to clarify, if I can go play with your map?
One would you like?
That one's good. The current sewer and water is laid along here and up and across, and there's actually a fire hydrant right down here in this corner, so there is already sewer and water on site because we're currently operating. The other part of the company is along here, and then, actually, do you have the aerial photo? The... The... And I don't know if you, if you're aware of what started all of this, what started this is that we have a not-so-nice acreage now because our pump went out, but this is all in commercial walnuts, and rather than take out more walnuts in order to have room, when the downsizing, we have porta-potties, you have to put them someplace, so we started overflowing, some of our commercial, where's my little pointer? We started overflowing our commercial, so that's, we had a site inspection, and that was what was determined that we need to move all that stuff back. Well, the only way to move everything back is going to be to take out walnuts, so that's why we're here to help overflow expand. But there is sewer and water currently.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Thompson. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this, please?
He's got a badge, man, I'm getting nervous.
Mario Christie, Chief of Police for the City of Farmersville and currently interim City Manager. Just to address the road improvement issue there, there are plans, and in fact, construction will start in the next few months for traffic circles, one at the off-ramp of eastbound Highway one ninety-eight, and then at the bridge at Farmersville Boulevard or Road one sixty-four, whichever you would like to call it. And then also plans for very shortly after that for a widening of Farmersville Boulevard south from the freeway to four lanes, median, traffic control, all of those things, so that should happen within the next year to year and a half as well. And then, of course, we worked very closely with your folks at the county, and they've received all our comments, and I think did a pretty good job of relaying our comments as well.
The man wears a lot of hats, he's also the fire chief.
I was successful in hiring a fire chief back in April, so we do have a fire chief now, so one hat off.
Nice to see you.
Any other comments this morning?
That's really going to improve that, because I travel that way a lot, and as traffic increases in commercial development, those circles will make it much easier to get on and off at the Farmersville turnoff.
Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public testimony portion, move it back to the Commission for a discussion.
I have a question on the billboard issue. Not too sure what exactly that's referring to, because doesn't that exit have a bunch of billboards? So I'm not sure why they would allow billboards on the exit and not...
That's a big sign. Pylon sign, Farmersville.
So that's not a billboard?
In keeping with the specific plan, I'm assuming that it would be a part of their, they want that area landscaped and with no unsightly characteristics along SR one ninety area.
Maybe ten years ago, we had a presentation, maybe it's time we invite them back. The Caltrans has very specific rules about signings along highways, and I don't know if it has a designation, but they control, and that's why I don't see so many billboard signs anymore, is because Caltrans sets the standard on that. Be great to know more about that. Welcome back, Chuck, you've been gone a while.
Thank you.
Things haven't been good since you've been gone, so...
Tried to stay away.
Well, they haven't been good, so we missed you.
Okay, anything else?
I just had a comment for Chuck. I appreciate the records check, what the cultural resources, that makes a lot of sense. It does mention some old historic buildings on the property, do we know what those are? I guess somebody in the audience would. I mean, what was that site used for? They would have buildings out there of fifty years or more?
The only thing I noticed out there that was that old was the residence. No other existing structure, Triple A and... Yeah, I haven't seen anything out there of that nature. The newer existing buildings are metal buildings. Built it ten years ago or so.
Sir, if you're going to provide testimony, we need you to come forward, identify yourself, and speak into the microphone because we're taping this.
Jay Fabel, owner of Three A Quality Services. My residence is two oh one, three oh Avenue, three thirty-six, Wood Lake. There are two buildings there that are modern metal buildings that were built about ten years ago with permits, and they are in use on the property. And then there's a resident, the resident is probably, I don't know how old the resident is, but it is an older resident, but there's no other, there's no other, there's no other...
Right, there's no other structures.
You maybe remember this too, but the house burnt down, there was a house that went right up next to the freeway, it was built with all clear redwood, it was turn of the century, but it caught on fire and burnt to the ground.
That was Effie Strobridge's property, and that was across one sixty-eight. That's a neighboring property to the east of us.
That's gone.
Yes.
That may have been what was recorded originally. So any other building plans for the site, or any kind of disturbance to the property there?
We would like to look into some warehouse, additional warehouse space just for storage. We have a lot of items that are made of plastic, and we'd like to have some kind of covering for them, but we have no plans to expand business facilities over there, it's just for the storage of existing equipment.
Jay runs a really clean operation, he's been in business at least as long as I've lived here, so, how long?
Nineteen fifty-eight.
Oh, that's great.
All right, thank you.
The city lost.
I'm sorry?
That was the city's loss, it was our gain getting you.
From Visalia?
Yeah.
We left Visalia in nineteen seventy-two, well, we started our business in nineteen seventy-two in Visalia, and we left there in two thousand and seven, and moved it to Farmersville.
Remember, Dirk Byes, you know, is clean, so...
I just have a couple of questions, I guess, and, you know, we're asking for a change of the general plan, we spend a lot of time making this general plan, and I don't change it lightly, and it just seems to me that this might be probably, maybe a little premature, and it doesn't seem like there's a big need for the change, and it looks like the city's going to annex it, and they can zone it the way they want when they get it annexed, and, you know, and it's in the Williamson Act, and I understand that you filed in two thousand and six, and I think in two more years, it's going to be out anyway without any more fees. Right now, you're looking at substantial fees to get out of it, if you get out of it right now. It's, and we're, you know, I guess, why fight the fight right now when it's not necessary? Wait two more years and things will be different, and I know Mrs. Thompson said something about an expansion and overflow, but I don't know if that's good enough reason for me, but I'm open.
Chairman Diaz, Chuck, if you could talk to some of the causation as to why we're going to commercial versus agriculture with the storage yard? I think there's a lot of reasons why we need to change the land use designation to be consistent with our general plan, and I think this is a form of implementation of the general plan. So it is timely, as far as staff's perspective on this, but Chuck, if you could talk to the nature of the storage yard, storage facility?
Sure, two things I'd like to mention is the general plan twenty thirty update included the boundaries of, around the cities, but it did not update any of the land uses around the cities, and as I mentioned, even though it was put into the, this particular project was put into the urban development or Farmersville, even though the land use wasn't changed, so we're kind of... So we're kind of behind on updating all the city general plans and updating and putting urban land uses on properties that are within urban development boundaries in accordance with the city plans. The second portion of that is that this particular project is not consistent with the zoning right now. And there was a violation on this particular property, and the AAA is trying to rectify that situation by getting the proper zones and the proper land use on this particular property for this.
Jay, can you just tell our plank, I'm more familiar with you than most, what businesses do you run from there?
Three A Quality Services is a portable sanitation, which includes portable toilets, and, and then also temporary fence, which is quite bulky, and then storage containers. And then we do electrical out of that office, and fire services, which includes sprinklers and, and fire extinguishers and that kind of thing. We also have on the property, the Three A Security, which is our guard and patrol company. We also have Night Guard Alarm, which is our security alarm company, and closed circuit TV. And then we have, on the premises, Delta, propane uses an office on our property. They do not store propane or anything on the property, they just are on there as, as an office. So that, that's how the property's being used at this time. One of the biggest problems is, is the slowdown that we've had with the construction, and that's caused us to have a lot of, of inventory, and this is all good inventory, it's not, it's not trash or anything like that, but the portable restrooms and the fence are two item, well, and our temporary power for the construction sites are, are the biggest use of the land, or the parking area and so forth. And we try to maintain it in a presentable way, and I, I welcome anyone to come out and, and give you a tour of what we are doing and how we are doing it, we, we welcome that. By the way, we are gonna have an open house and a mixer from the Visaya Chamber of Commerce at the end of October.
Thank you, Jay.
I, I have a question. So you're, you're not planning on taking the walnuts out, correct?
We like, we'd like not to.
But you did say there was a problem with the well on that?
It's being taken care of today.
Oh, so there will be water for?
Yes, yes, ma'am, today.
Thank you. Okay, is any, any other questions, thank you. Anybody else would like, oh, I guess we've already closed that portion, we're back to the, back to the commission here. Any more questions or issues? Okay, well, Mr. Bach, one question, Mr. Bach. The C three, I, just to confirm, is compatible with what Farmersville sees as going on there? That's an industrial air use out through there, and that's gonna, and that's compatible with what they're?
Yes, we, yes, that is compatible with their city land uses.
That's correct. And one, just one thing, if the city were to annex this particular property due to their land supply, it would be five, ten, fifteen years in the future before they would be able to be?
Yeah, yeah, I can see that, because there's, there's just not much of a push out there, it's gonna be a while before it gets there. Okay, we have a motion? Nobody's too excited about this project, huh?
We don't know how to frame the motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve. The general plan amendment, GPA thirteen double zero two, zone amendment, zone change amendment, PG thirteen dash double zero two, Williamson Act cancellation, PAC thirteen dash double zero two for Three A Quality Services. And approve the, recommend the, the adoption, the mitigated negative declaration and mitigating, mitigation monitoring plan for GPA thirteen dash double zero two and PG thirteen dash double zero four to the Board of Supervisors.
I would just like to clarify that this would be two motions. Yes, two motions, one would be the NMND first, and then the recommendation.
Second, there's a second motion here.
That's correct.
I'll second that motion.
So we're doing, we're doing the mitigated nec, negative deck.
Correct.
Correct. As the first part, the recommendation to approve the mitigated neg, negative declaration and mitigation monitoring program.
Right.
For the project, that would be the first motion, and then the second motion would be approval of, recommend approval of the actual general plan amendment and the zone change to the Board of Supervisors with the conditions as modified in our discussion.
I second that first motion.
I think we had, we had a motion on the first portion and the second, roll call?
Song?
Yes.
Billings?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Eliano?
Yes.
Norman, I'm Aguilar.
Yes.
Okay, the motion, that, that portion is passed, now we need a motion for, to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to approve the general plan amendment and the.
That's it.
And the change of zone, PG. Okay?
Make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Song?
Yes.
Billings?
Yes.
Elliot?
Yes.
BS?
Yes.
Whitlatch?
Yes.
Eliano?
Yes.
Aguilar?
Yes.
Oh, got it right.
All right. Motion is passed.
Thank you for your consideration.
Ben. Okay, item six is the discussion, six A is cultural protocol update, and Mr. Bach, as our chief planner, is going to talk to him.
Chairman Diaz, commissioners, just to give you a quick update on where we're at with this cultural protocol that we're working on. What, what we are looking to do is look for procedures on how to screen projects better for cultural resources as they come through the process. We're working towards putting together a formal presentation at this time, but we did want to give you an update and tell you we're, we're still working on it. Basically, what we're looking to do is establish a tiering system where we can evaluate at what level we'll move in based on either parcel size, or sensitive physical locations, or documented cultural resources, what, what tier these projects will fit in. It, it will also, when we come back to you, include a feasibility analysis, so we don't want to overburden applicants with this process, but we do want to give you all the relevant information so you can make an informed decision in regards to cultural resources. So preliminarily, what we're looking at is basically a three-tiered system, and I'm just gonna broadly outline this for you. And so the, the first part of the tiering will be based on parcel size and location. We do have a, a map that we're working on that does indicate water bodies, hilltops, and undisturbed land, really following the Appendix G guidance from the SEQA checklist. We're, we're looking at a parcel size, a range of about forty acres or larger, to, to see if we want to pass through this first tier, so if it's less than forty acres, it's probably gonna stay in that first tier system. And then we'll obviously document the nearby cultural resources. So that first tier will, we'll recommend a review under Chris and/or SHIPO. And that's kind of what we're, we're really doing now, for the most part, and we're not even looking at parcel size or anything else, we're just kind of doing that as a matter of fact. If it's larger than forty acres, if it's next to sensitive physical locations, or there are any documented cultural resources, we're looking to move into the next tier. And that next tier will be more than just the, the Chris record search, that'll include a Chris letter itself, Native American Heritage Commission's sacred land search, and an RMA visit. And what we have done is qualified staff members through Chris to actually do some of this, this work themselves, as, as far as looking at the databases and doing the research, but to have that staff person actually go out on site and, and look for any historical resources. If we find stuff, then obviously we're into hiring a professional, and the professional would go out and give us that, that phase one study report. So, working with this commission, I think we'll, we'll navigate through this in the upcoming months, so we're, we're satisfied that it's a, a process, a protocol that, you know, is in line with SEQA, and in line with the state statutes, and in line with what this commission wants to see. So, so we're working on it, and that's kind of where we're at today. If there's any feedback you want to give to me as far as, sounds like we're moving in the right direction, I'd appreciate that, or if there's anything you'd like to add at this point, we're, we're all ears.
If I may, thank you, Aaron, that was excellent. I just want to add briefly that we will be coming forward with a formal written presentation with a report. We've done the research for all the state statutes and so forth that apply, so you'll get a comprehensive report to support what our proposed protocol will be as a working document, to which you can react and provide comments and so forth. But this was just an informal update to let you know we're working on it, a lot of research has been done, and we're gonna come forward with a nice formal presentation with mapping so that you can have a, a degree of comfort as to how we're approaching the analysis of cultural resources and projects. Thank you.
That sounds very comfortable, and we are moving in the right direction. Before, on so many of these projects, they would come to us and be more like throwing darts at a dartboard, we didn't know exactly where they were gonna land, but I, I think this tier system is exactly the criteria we need, and I appreciate your work on it, gentlemen.
Aaron, Hector have done a ton of work, and they should be credited for that.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys. Okay, anything else, Mr. Bach, on this issue? Okay, seven, seven A is the Planning Director's Update, Director's Report.
Let's hear from Aaron first.
Chairman Diaz, commission, as far as an update on the community plans, what we have met with HHSA this last week, and what we are proposing to do is actually, and we are right on the cusp of TRAVER being done, and this is an opportunity to work with HHSA and add, add a few policies that I think will really progress our community plans. It's a, it's a, it's a new, new day as far as planning, healthy communities isn't our general plan, and we really want to expound upon that a little bit. So given that our environmental document is a hundred percent done, we'll, we'll submit that out for comment, but the community plan, you know, in the next couple of weeks will be done, and so I'm hoping, hoping to give you a preview of that as soon as we go out to the comment, so you're looking probably a month away from actually having that before you. Pixley is also moving forward very, very steadily, and so that's, I, I want to say that's probably gone over about seventy-five percent cusp at this part. The environmental document, it's just, we're still getting our studies completed on that. That is also to a point that we're, we're hoping to get it done this year, but it might get, get pushed to next year as far as the studies, and really working with the community to make sure that we have everything that they want to see in there, and that we're working with everybody out there, and so that's, that's part of that project. Goshen amazingly is moving forward very, very smoothly. We have, we are getting our studies back now, so the environmental document will move forward a, a little bit quicker than Pixley's at this point. The, it has a lot, a lot of issues, as you're well aware, we are, they are working on the interchange in, in Goshen, and there are plans. We just had a PRC for self-help housing, and that'll be before you shortly as far as a rezone project from self-help for five hundred units and a five-acre commercial right on Betty Riggin. They presented that to the, our, in one of our workshops, and it was received very well from the community, so we're moving forward on a lot of fronts as far as these community plans, and most of all, and I think this is our, our greatest asset, we're really working very closely with Public Works in such a collaborative way that, and with the roads folks, that as people bring up problems or issues, Terabella, the sands kind of moved into the roadway a little bit, we went out there and swept it. Studies for Main Street and Terabella warrant studies for stop signs. We might not have really given that as much focus, but we did, and so we're, we're moving forward to correct some of the potential issues out there in a way that we, we've never done before. So it's a, it's a great opportunity, but it is, our progress is slowed down a little bit by dealing with all these issues as we work through them, but like I said, we're, we are anticipating getting TRAVER before you in the next month.
Well, that sounds good. Comments from the commission?
Excuse me, it seems like Goshen, it's gotta be so diff, it's, it's moving so fast that every time I drive through there, I'm like, whoa, this, you know, it's, it's changing, ever-changing, it's.
And Goshen will change very quickly, and to a large degree, I think I've told the commission before, in two thousand and sixteen, they're anticipating closing down the three oh four ramps, both sides of the freeway, the hook ramps, it's too close to the off-ramp at Betty Riggin, and it's too close to the one ninety-eight interchange, so that, those are going away.
So when am I gonna get my overpass there, right there?
Two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, you're gonna have an overpass out there, and, and we're working through a whole foray of working with the landowners out there, working with the citizenry, and they understand at this point that, they, they were in the process when it initially started, you know, five years ago, but they thought they had a plan, and then Caltrans moved forward and progressed, and they changed the plan a little bit at the end here, so that, they are surprised, so we're working with them to a high level to try to get them as informed and get Caltrans to, to work with us, because, you know, they, the utilities weren't necessarily being coordinated, so we're working, Public Works is working closely with Caltrans to make sure that we do get sewer and water into that overpass, so we can have access to development on the west side. And recently, we just got them to agree to put bike lanes across that overpass, so it's, it's Caltrans and it's working with them, but you're right, absolutely, there's gonna be a lot of change, you're seeing a lot of change now as far as the expansion of the freeway to three lanes, you're gonna see a lot, a lot more change coming, especially Betty Riggin, and especially with the plans we're, we're making to do simple things like truck routes. One last item I wanted to discuss, and I was gonna let Mr. Bond discuss a little bit, is we're, we have Complete, the Complete Streets program, and we are at the point of completing that. And we did, we were, we're absolutely trying to make a September deadline with TCAG, so as part of that process, you're looking at transit, bikes, pedestrians, and we're looking at fully designing two of the main roadways in each one of these communities, and we're at a, we're at a point, working with our consultant, to actually have, you know, sixty percent, forty-five to sixty percent plans by the time we're done here. So we're, we're way ahead of the curve, and we're doing a lot of work with these communities. So you're seeing a lot of change now, you're gonna see a lot more change, and then you'll see, hopefully over the next five years, more change than, than we've really seen before.
That's all good news.
Got a question, question about the Complete Streets. And this came up the other night in our community plan discussions in three rivers, where, where, you know, we really don't have a town center in the same sense that the communities that you're working on do, and I'm wondering, is there a program within Complete Streets that kind of puts the Complete Streets component into a proposed town center that could attract other development to actually make it into a town center?
Well, the, the Complete Streets program is very, very broad, it's, it has two components. One is to actually have designs of roadways, the other side of it is the policy side that goes into your circulation element, it was intended to go into general plans, and we did incorporate a lot of the, we didn't say Complete Streets in our two thousand and twelve general plan, two thousand and eleven's when the legislation came for Complete Streets, but we do talk about those policies. So if you wanted to move in that direction, it would be on a policy level, and it could and it could be as simple as, uh, lines on a map. Um, but yeah, you wouldn't necessarily need to go to the level of detail of a design to implement what you're, you're talking about. I think the circulation element would be the direction.
So, would that be appropriate for our community plan in Three Rivers?
The answer is yes, but I would like to proceed cautiously because it could be viewed as, um, expanding development to a degree that may be unacceptable. But quite frankly, we're using this as a tool, uh, in the community planning area in order to promote safety, number one. And number two, believe it or not, to bring about substantial environmental benefit. Because when you reduce motorized travel and can use pedestrian walkways and bicycling, you're reducing the adverse air emissions. And in order to get these grants, we have to show how we're going to reduce greenhouse gases. So, there is a key environmental benefit. That's why we think it would be appropriate. I don't know how well-received it would be because it could be construed incorrectly as a pro-development device, but it's got a strong environmental and healthy component to it.
Well, we've got, you know, it's really strange in Three Rivers because we've got all these kids that are outdoor kids. We don't have a single kid that rides a bike to school. You know, and this is because we're, you know, dependent on this highway with people speeding through there at 50, 60 miles an hour in some cases. And I'm thinking that maybe the complete streets could take a section of our center and allow kids to feed into that and go to school safely.
What we could do is, uh, during one of our monthly, uh, community plan update meetings in Three Rivers, have, uh, Aaron come out and describe what the program means and we could start the discussion. But I don't want to push it or force it, if you will, if it's not going to happen.
Well, I know if anyone could bring it up cautiously, you could, so, let's go for it.
Thank you. Um, Hector?
Just a couple of things. Uh, at your next planning commission meeting, we plan on having a public hearing regarding, uh, Penas, the expansion of the, when we say expansion, it is like the footprint is increasing. It's the throughput and, and ability within that same footprint that's going to, to be expanded. So, that will be coming to your commission in a couple of weeks.
Is it Arosia?
Uh, just, yeah, it's kind of south of, east of Arosi.
Up there, to be precise.
So, we, we, we received only a couple of comments. Both of them were okay from the Valier district and from Cal Recycle, so there, there's nothing adverse. A couple of citizens said, you know, we're a little worried about some odor and some dust and basically, conditions of approval can handle that. So, they weren't real substantial. We only got three phone calls. One person called twice, so, it was, it was well-received. Uh, the other thing is, we recently, uh, last Friday, we released a notice of preparation for our environmental impact report for the Deer Creek Mine Expansion. That's, uh, south of Porterville. So, that's moving forward. And then we have the environmental work that we're all working on for the community plans. Aaron's group comes up with the plan and then it's up to Hector's group to do the environmental review of it. And all of this is real beneficial as they mentioned the complete streets, the safe route to school. When you have an adopted and approved environmental document on hand, you're, you're shovel-ready when it comes to environmental and that could really accelerate their ability to receive grants and awards of that like, you know. You'll often hear, we're releasing monies today and we're saying, hey, we've got the environmental covered. We got our plan done, uh, because they're not going to give you a bag of money and say, now what are you going to do with it? We have a plan, we have environmental. And we can, we could also tear off of those environmental documents for, say, federal funding. You have an EIR, which is pretty darn, you know, a good environmental document and you could tear off of that and do a, a Fed document. Uh, good stuff, it's good stuff. So, that makes it a lot easier for us to then move forward and get some projects completed. So, we're, we're banging along. We're in the background. You know, you don't hear about it until somebody comes up and says, you know, did you look at the gray fox and the lizards? And they're not species of concern, you know, they're, they're, they're pretty common critters, you know, and, and, uh, uh, we, we are concerned about habitat and water quality and the like, but, you know, when an expert tells us it's not going to have a significant adverse impact, uh, we go along with what that expert tells us. So, uh, we're like, again, we're, we're kind of in the background until somebody comes up and asks the environmental questions. That's really it.
Uh, Mike?
Yeah, Mike Bond, uh, Public Works. Uh, as was mentioned, uh, Public Works really is doing, uh, working very collaboratively with, uh, planning. And, uh, Aaron is doing a masterful job on the community plan update. Uh, and please don't tell him I mentioned that. But, uh, it, it's, uh, it's almost a wholesale realignment within Public Works to work, uh, to target, uh, the community projects. Uh, so, uh, complete streets are, is part of that, but there are many other dimensions to that as well. So, uh, it's a, it's a highly coordinated effort. We're participating with Aaron's program, uh, on the street, literally, the shirets, et cetera. Uh, and so, we're taking that information back and, and putting it into our programs. Uh, and, uh, that's going to be reflected in a comprehensive program through TCAG to, uh, identify a whole slate of projects, uh, that we're managing, both doing in-house and outsourcing. So, there's a tremendous workload, uh, in front of us and we're, uh, concentrating on, uh, the priority of that work, uh, complementing and participating in the community plan projects, uh, complete streets being part of that certainly. And also, um, uh, refining our, our program with TCAG. We're concentrating on the funding part of that as, so the spending plan is, uh, is currently underway. So, we're, uh, looking forward to that. If I, if I may also mention, uh, there's, uh, a very, uh, recent project we've worked with planning on and through the state, the Water Board, uh, on Thursday, July 31st, uh, an entourage from the Water Board came down from Sacramento and met in Seville. And, uh, we stood on the, uh, current, uh, existing well site and they gave us a verbal authorization to proceed with, uh, development of a well in Seville, uh, in their, in dire straits in terms of water supply. Uh, so, that, uh, verbal was given on Thursday afternoon on July 31st. On Friday, we plan to have that well in production. So, a very fast track and, uh, a, a, a very collaborative thing, not only within the county agencies, but with the state Water Board as well.
Nancy, they get well drillers pretty fast around here, don't they?
Yes, they do.
There's a big waiting list on most of them.
I doubt who they're working with.
Uh, Michael, I had a, a question too. I think it's Public Works. But our, um, we have a really nice complex behind our school, the, the library, the county library facility. We have, we put a playground in with a bunch of grant money and it's, in fact, we're just dedicating a shade structure for the playgrounds, really neat. When my kids were growing up, we didn't have a playground, but we do now and it's getting a lot of use. But there, there's some sort of water dispute. There's no water whatsoever going to the library and there is no water for landscaping for the school or the library. So, and I, I know it has something to do with our ditch because the ditch water was doing a lot of the irrigation there. But the county was contacted by the library, the playground people who are our community service district and also the school, and they said they would resolve this by July. They were contacted last fall. We haven't heard anything new on this and I'm just wondering what's going on with the situation and could someone in staff maybe help us get to the bottom of this?
Well, I don't believe we've been contacted to assist with regard to that issue. The only issue that I am aware of, uh, for which there has been a contact is the building permit for the shade structure. But in terms of the overall water issue, we have not been contacted to provide any assistance.
I think that was directed to Alan Ashida originally, but...
Problem.
Yeah, well, maybe. But I don't, you know, the thing is, is it doesn't, I was in the library yesterday and i- it's hard to believe they're without water, you know, they have a little bottle of water there in case somebody gets thirsty.
Okay, that probably then will gravitate eventually to RMA because just to tear off the comments of, uh, of Mike, the county has been successful in helping to bring about a couple of million dollars in grants for bottled water and for limited water infrastructure improvements. We are being targeted as the model or the pilot county and you're probably going to see much more aggressive action in the coming weeks and months in terms of how to help on an interim basis, folks whose water, uh, whose water well has gone dry, but who has to prove that there's contamination. It's not mere, um, reduction in the water table and no water that qualifies you for the bottled water. You have to prove that there's contamination. So, what we're doing is working with state Water Resources Control Board to create some maps so that on a generic level, we can say this area does have contamination, boom, we can go in, rather than test every single conceivable well. And that takes a lot of time, that's an added expense of the program. So, we're doing bottled water, then Mike, he did a phenomenal job, got a well drilled in a matter of days, uh, with, you know, fast-paced action, working directly with the state, which is very commendable. You're going to see more and more that as we implement our community plans, we're going to be focusing on water and wastewater infrastructure. And if we do well during this crisis, unfortunately, I think Clary County will be high on the list in order to get funding for the construction of the infrastructure to help with, uh, improving water quality and to prevent, uh, wastewater from, uh, contaminating that good quality. With returning to the streets, complete streets, um, and other programs, we're finishing our Measure Our Spending program, which is the most comprehensive ever, ever. It's going to be over a hundred million dollars in projects that we're looking for funding from TCAG to focus on the communities. Again, this is another way in which we're trying to implement the general plan by staying within the community planning areas and staying within the UDBs of the community planning areas and avoiding development outside not only the UDBs, but the UABs at a more urbanized level and definitely not in valley agriculture. Now, I know you've seen this year, a couple of subdivisions that were challenging. Is that they were in the pipeline as part of the old project system, really before the GPU was adopted. As administrative, at an administrative level, we're trying to clear the decks. But in terms of new projects, we're steering them in the UDBs at a more urbanized level, at the UAB level, still trying to keep moderate to low density, um, unless it's right next to a UDB. And definitely for the valley floor, we're not encouraging the major kinds of development. We want to keep it to low-density development, parcel maps and home sites, and that's it. That's in keeping with the general plan. So, this, tearing back to our project today, this was a model in working with a city per the memorandum of understanding, which is an outgrowth of the general plan, albeit it looked agriculture, but there were so many GPU factors driving it towards its appropriate for, for development. That's what we're trying to do at RMA. Implement the general plan, steer the type of economic development growth and housing growth where it should be and stay away from agriculture because we are number one now. Not theoretically, actually, we're number one and we want to keep it that way and still promote economic development where it should be and housing for folks who need that housing where it should be. With regard to the community plans, Aaron has done a good job in focusing on what we're doing, uh, at a fast pace, which is TRAVER, uh, Goshen and, uh, Pixley. We've also started, uh, monthly meetings at Three Rivers going through past, uh, planning documents, working towards the development of a draft plan and an EIR, which hopefully will get out for public review in 2015. We've also got Early Mart initiated. So, once we finish Pixley, we'll move to Early Mart. Then, probably next month, we will move forward to the board for a general plan initiation of community plans for Cutler, Arosi, Lindsay Strathmore, Ducor, Terabella and One Hablet, Tipton. That's an ambitious program. That's nine plans moving forward in two years at an appropriate level of environmental review. Most of them will be EIRs, some will be MNDs, but most of them will be EIRs. And again, it is intended through the appropriate planning, but then lay the groundwork for planning and Public Works to go get the grant dollars in order to put in the road infrastructure and then the water infrastructure and the wastewater infrastructure. So, you see, there's a method to our madness here. We're actually logical in the way we're approaching planning, zoning, infrastructure and ultimately building permits. And with Dennis Lehman, uh, leading the charge at, uh, at Building and Housing, by the time planning and infrastructure are done, boom, we're ready to go for the building permits. That's what we're trying to do. Take away a lot of the delay that had been encountered years ago by doing good planning, good environmental, good infrastructure planning, so we can go right to building permits and then stay away from the valley floor where the agriculture should flourish.
And, excuse me, in Pixley, I mean, in, um, Goshen, the, how many, uh, units did you say the self-help?
Uh, right now, we're looking at approximately between, uh, it's a kind of a wide range, about 300 to 500. And it's, uh, multifamily, a, a large amount of it, which is different from what they've done out there currently. Um, so, uh...
They have a multifamily place out there.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, it's, they also have the lower densities. They're actually looking to raise the densities on this new, new project.
And so, uh, and my question to that is, are the, are they planning? There's a, you know, Goshen, they are always trying to get them from one side over to the other. Is that part of the plan? Is that...
No, we're, the, uh...
So, who's going to go into those homes?
Basically, uh, there was actually, from what we understand, there was a long list of people waiting from the previous development, so they will be there. As far as, I mean, they're, they're, they're local residents and they are...
Oh, they are, just relocating.
And basically, that's what we heard from the community last time, from a few folks, was that, uh, they had been previously put on the list and, um, either didn't qualify at the time or, um, just, uh, didn't make it in there. Um, so, th- those people were local and there'll, there'll be outside folks, but it is self-help. So, you're part of the, you're part of the, you're part of the program as far as, uh, helping to build these facilities, so... Um, so, yeah, as far as the growth in, uh, Goshen, that is, um, it's a, it's a little bit more than what we would see as like a consistent with the general plans, a 1.3% growth rate, but it's, it's all we're going to see for a while because there's not that much more available, developable land within the, uh, UDB currently unless we go north of Betty Riggin. And, uh, there's really, uh, from the way we're looking at it right now, that it, it, that has, uh, a, a long timeframe with it. There was development interest there previously, um, there isn't necessarily currently. So, we'll, we'll see how, what happens with the market. But as we look at it right now, like Mike said, we are looking to be in line with SB 244, be in line with the, uh, in line with the funding and, uh, being realistic about how much we can grow so that infrastructure can keep up with the growth rates and that we don't get so far ahead of ourselves that we're behind in the infrastructure. We, we, we're not being sustainable.
And in line with that, you'll probably see next year the housing element update as well as the SB 244, which is a very detailed infrastructure plan, particularly for disadvantaged communities. So, there'll be some, uh, good projects for you to consider. The last item, if I may, Mr. Chairman, is that you may know that, uh, our director Jake Raper will be retiring the first week in October. And consequently, what I'd like to do is sometime in September to have your commission provide, uh, a recognition, a plaque, if you will. So, I'll be working with the chair and the vice chair and we'll do something appropriate in September. And then, when there's a retirement party date, we'll, we'll let you know that as well.
That's good.
He's had a long, uh, Jake, uh, career of public service and he's done a really good job. I clap because I'm glad to see that he's going to enjoy his retirement, you know? He deserves it. So, I guess he can always bring him back as a consultant or something. Good man, so...
Thank you.
I have a question for you. I've been reviewing the, uh, it's a real sleeper, but the VISA, uh, commu, the VISA general plan. And, uh, have you had a lot of interactions? Because the first few things I noticed last night was, is that there seemed like they're in a hurry to get it done. Two, they're encouraging development by shifting money, money to McCullough so that they can move north of St. John's River. And, um, you know, like, they're going to have a meeting September 5th or 7th or 8th, the council. And, uh, we need to, we need to, we need to comment on that because it's not really connected to our plan very well.
Commissioner Whitlatch, we have commented, uh, on their general plan EIR and we have, uh, received comments back from them. We are... We are working with them through our MOU, really, and just trying to clarify some things for our MOU with them. And initially, we were not satisfied with the responses to our comments, so we, we put them back into the record to see if they would respond to them. And they did, for the most part. As far as talking to the planners in the city, the, the real intent, and they're, we thought there would be a big push with our Goshen community plan to really figure out the boundary along Road 76 and basically what the city is saying is that they don't have real interest in expanding to the west or...
If you get north of Riggin Road, then they're gonna go...
Yeah, their previous intentions to move further into Goshen or further south or east are, are just not there anymore. They, they really are looking at infill, for the most part, and real selected growth. And they have the new tiering system, the tier one, tier two, tier three, which complicates the UDB and UAB process a little bit. But as far as moving forward to the city council, they're supposed to have everything kind of congealed at that time. They've been in the process for a while, I believe since 2006, so it's not, it's not being rushed upon anybody. It's just kinda coming to this final, final moment. And in those final moments, you just try to, to get it out as, as a planner.
It's like they painted in what they want and after all, some of it is south of the airport. I mean, that's quite a picture there. It's, it's all painted white.
Right, and we commented on the reserve designation and if that was actually a policy and they did look back through their, look back through their general plan and look back through their resolutions in the past and it is in fact, the painted white, the reserve designation is in fact a designation under their, their general plan. So the intent there is to, to develop that area. We, we intend to also move forward with plans for that area. So I think that 198 to 99 area will be really important in the future as far as economic development. So, so we all have interest there.
It seems like those areas encroach on our airport. At some point, we should be meeting as a airport land use commission to make some recommendations of our thoughts. Industrial uses and commercials within that airport area. Because they show a much bigger airport on the, on the plan.
On the plan, yeah.
Talking about a commercial development on Caldwell.
Right, right.
And then developing roads, wider roads north of McCullough, and that's, that's great farmland out there.
Well, we'll take this into consideration and in our, our discussions with the city as we move forward to the city council meeting, we will bring that to their attention. And I could report back to you at the next meeting as to what, what they, they do say about that. But we have been working with the city and commenting on their general plan and the general plan EIR through the process.
And thank you, Aaron. We will have an airport land use commission annual meeting in December for you, to bring you up to date and also have you be given the opportunity to express any concerns you may have.
How about Stillwell? Stillwell, Stillwell? Mining?
In process. Stay tuned.
They'll be coming back to us, probably, if they don't straighten up.
For due process concerns, just stay tuned.
Okay. But it probably will come here.
More than likely, yes.
I just have one question for John. Does Three Rivers have a water treatment facility?
No, we don't. And that's, you know, that was the big decision we made historically, whether to develop Mineral King level kind of facilities, one Disney, one to put a ski area up there. And the town voted just about two to one not to do that. And that's why we're pretty much, we have a number of water associations, but no...
No infrastructure or anything for it, no?
No. And it's certainly gonna have a bearing on how much we can do in the future up there.
Yeah, just, just curious.
Kind of turn of that river, green, blue, with all that sewage.
Why do that?
Okay, are we through with the director's report?
Yes, sir.
Item eight is the Planning Commission's discussion items and request for future agenda items, anything?
Five wants to know, when is our county planning commissioners' meeting?
Oh, this year?
Yeah.
They're looking at late October and it's in Merced County. The stuff should be going out. I would've thought we had it by now, but the city of Los Banos is doing all the work on it.
Who is the city, what?
Osmanos.
Los Banos. And it's, and part of the sessions are gonna be at UC Merced, is what I've been told. So I should, by the next meeting, have a more definitive stuff on that.
That's my wife's comment for me, so I don't know where I'm going.
Calendar going.
Yeah, they're always good and, you know, we'll make sure that we get...
My wife's always good, so it's peace and control, just like Nancy does.
Our president is a busy, you know, he's a Basque descendant. Their family's big and ranching in that area and he's also a real estate agent. So he's real busy right now. He doesn't communicate like some of our past ones have, but we'll have, I'm sure we're gonna have a good program this year.
Good. All right, anything else on, for future agenda? Nothing? Okay, item nine is adjournment. We'll see you back here and on August 27.